Yes, Marty ain't going neither.
Well, that is to be us tonight being bad people, good people.
What? Yes, sure. One question. I know we're all in here, but when we come to Clark Chapel Church, he's got to accuse himself. So we don't want to have form.
Yep.
But since it was already heard.
We'll have to continue that one.
Well, or you just decide to pass it on to the Board of Commissioners with no vote on it. I mean, you would have reviewed it. I mean, either way. I mean, it's on their agenda for the 26th unless you want to discuss it tomorrow. But it's not, well, it's not, it's not really, it's not a public hearing. So you can't vote on it tomorrow either. Because that's not an advertised meeting which for that purpose.
So we'll have to continue.
But because, I mean, because of the last meeting where we were just waiting on that.
We still got to approve the.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that your condition was to approve.
Based on the site plan you have.
The site plan, so we could just pass it on them. Can we do that so we don't have to wait another month?
I'll say to continue.
Unless he doesn't recuse himself. But does he have to?
No, she'd have to.
No, for my state.
That's fine, that's, I'm good with that.
Are you?
No, I don't ever.
I says, your choice, Stephen.
Yeah.
That's fine, I mean, I'm all right with it, like I said, I'll just continue it. Okay.
I cling to, I don't give people ammunition to buy. Do you understand?
Oh, I'm fooled, I'm all right with it, yeah.
Yeah.
Like I said, just to make sure it goes through the same process and it won't look like we asked it all about it, I say we continue it, we got a full form. That's kind of my thoughts on that.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, we had a little pause every minute, I think we're ready to get our meeting started. We usually start out with an opening prayer, but everybody in the audience that might want to start some of the opening prayer.
Joe could do a first.
Okay. Who? Who?
Joe Jordan.
Okay, Joe. Okay, great, yeah, please. Start off with open prayer.
Before we come here tonight, I ask you, Lord, to deal with the Planning Commission Board, God, and then make all the right decisions, Lord. Not necessarily to please everybody, but the right decision. God will ask you to go with each and every person here. God let everything be said. If you can, be in love. And we just ask you to watch over this meeting, keep us safe, all this asking in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Praise allegiance, praise, praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I call to hold the August meeting of the Upton County Planning and Zoning Board. Can we get roll call?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hilton?
Here.
Chairman Fallon?
Here.
Commissioner Murphy. The record show Commissioner Murphy is absent. Commissioner Rush. The record show Commissioner Rush is absent. Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
You have form, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Stone. Okay, we've got the adoption of the minutes of our last meeting. I think we did have one exception noted. Through the email from Steve, does anybody have any other exceptions on the?
I didn't see anything except that one thing where it was Ms. Janice Bowles, not Jessica Meyer.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to accept the minutes with the change.
I make a motion to accept the minutes with the change.
No, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, old business, Clark Chapel Church Site Plan Review. We run into a little bit of a hurdle here with this one. Commissioner Hilton is going to recuse himself from this, at this particular time, which puts us without form, so we're going to have to continue this to our next meeting. I'm sorry, I wish we could do better, but like I said, right now with the, with lack of form, we can't, can't move on this. Okay, so do we, in this case, we don't, we just leave it at that and we don't have to have a motion or anything because we don't have form here, we, okay. So, all right, our next, in old business is the subdivision ordinance amendments, and I will combine it with zoning ordinance amendments because we, we have a planning work session meeting tomorrow that will be covering these two things, so those will continue on as, as we've been going. Okay, any commissioner discussion on any of the above?
I don't have any.
Okay. On an new business, we've got an application for rezoning, R E Z 202503, applicant property owner Judy A Green, US Highway 19 and Allen Road, parcel number 076004, from AR to C2, G C 1 remains. We're going to have a motion to open a public hearing on this.
I make a motion to open a public hearing.
Second?
No, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We want to get the staff report first.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. All right, we've got an application from the owner applicant Judy Green requesting a rezoning of the property at US 19 and Allen Road, specifically five acres there at the northeast corner from AR to C2. As we, as you know, the gateway corridor, every parcel continues to have the gateway corridor zoning on it, G C 1. The purpose of the rezoning request was to allow for development of a convenience store, gas station, some sort of commercial use like that. The C2 zoning district does allow various consumer retail businesses and services, typical of all the things that you see on US 19 now. Again, this five acres is located at the corner of US 19, just north of Allen Road. The area is AR all the way around. And these are descriptions of the AR zoning district, the C2 district, and what's expected in the overlay district. And the overlay pretty much only occurs when there's actual development, it doesn't really require anything upfront unless you're going to maintain some of the landscaping and not cut vegetation down. As we always discuss, there are review standards required by the state of Georgia and your own ordinances, and for purposes of rezoning, these are those standards. We also have a comprehensive plan, and we always look for, to that for guidance. So in this particular case, and there's an error in your staff report, the actual character area is forestry in this particular area, and of course, we've cited certain goals and strategies that you may apply in a particular case of this rezoning. Looking at this, you see that we do have the forestry character area, we have a request to go to C2, and in a particular instance in the comp plan, we don't really list C2 as one of those zoning districts, but from a zoning perspective, a zoning district in that character area. But in this particular area, this might be a typical place that you would expect a C2 zoning. It does introduce higher intensity commercial use, which is appropriate for major corridors and designated commercial nodes, but as we point out, does not fit traditionally in what you, the forestry area. We would caution that if you're going to approve this, we do in the future want to avoid strip commercialization, which is a pattern of scattered, car-dependent development that undermines the corridor aesthetics, walkability, traffic flow, et cetera. We would hope that we would develop a node in this location and not stretch it north and south in the county. This could be a planned node for commercial development. These are the list of all those criteria. We discussed the suitability of the use. Right now, at least what's developed in the areas, nothing, you'll see in the aerial that's in your staff report, we'll show you here, this is a heavily wooded area where it's not already been harvested, the pines haven't been harvested, so there really isn't much development in this particular area. There currently isn't any existing economic use on the property, I'm not sure when it was harvested, but when we went up there, and you'll see in the photos, obviously sometime in the not-too-distant future, the pines were probably harvested on that property. Staff is unaware of any existing or extenuating circumstances. In terms of threat to the safety and welfare of the area, if this is approved, there's always going to be some impacts of commercial development. I don't think that this is going to be any more particular, depending on what the use is, than any other commercial use might be. So if the Planning Commission wants to recommend limitations on the type of commercial that can go here, you can do that, or you can just allow any general C2, that's certainly at your discretion. But we're unaware of any specific health or safety, welfare issues that would be more outstanding for this C2 than any other. In this area, there will not be any overtaxing of the utility streets, we're told that it will require well and septic at this location. And again, the environment is not pristine here, it's been harvested pine, so if you look at the site, it's pretty much been worked over. It may not be developed with commercial development or any sort of human development structures, but it's certainly a disturbed environment. Planning Commission's realm here, this is your hearing, you will have the opportunity to horsemake conditions, deny, or continue this if you feel that you need additional information. Staff recommendation and conditions, staff recommends approval of the rezoning request from AR to C2. What we're looking at is the location, the future commercial potential, proximity to residential areas which may be able to benefit from this, which also ties into the market, and good planning principles as long as we don't extend the commercial in this area. All right, here's the site, now this, this is an older photo, so you can see it's still wooded in this aerial, but I believe these are 2023 aerials taken from the Texas Census' website, the site's been cleared compared to that photo there. Here you can see the zoning in the areas, is surrounding it is AR. So here you can see the cleared nature, this is sort of the peak of the property, there is a barn across 19, that's 19 you see below, so this is an elevated property, at least slightly inward from both of the two streets. Again, evidence of the logging operation. Again, this is looking to the west, into the site, looking east, and again, looking east. There is certainly some elevation change on the lot. That concludes the staff report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Ms. Green, did you have anything? If you'd like, you please step up and. If you'll please state your name.
Judy Green.
Have we, have we opened the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry, I make a motion, a motion to open the hearing on this.
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thanks, Secretary.
John, have any questions about the proposal?
I mean, me, I do yes to you, is this for you, or is this something you're trying to get approval in selling the lot, or you intend on opening the store yourself?
That's, I'm not sure it's about that exactly, I probably would end up selling it to somebody, but I'm going to grade it and get it ready, get it level, get it ready, but I mean, or I could try to do it myself, I hadn't, I'm probably going to end up selling it, that lot for a, I'd like, you know, the, I don't know, this is just me, I mean, I haven't gotten any, have any contacts this way, but I was thinking about a convenience store, gas station type situation, because there's no gas between Thomason and Butler, you know? But that's in, that's what I have sort of in mind, but I wanted to go ahead and get the zoning in place, you know, so that I didn't want to wait around, you know, four or five more years, I've been thinking about it for several years now, and I just divided that five acres out, it was under Cuba, and I pulled that out with the plan of doing that. So it's, it may not happen tomorrow, you know, but I'm, it's a plan, it's a long-term plan to me.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
No, I don't have any.
I don't have any. That's what I was wondering, is what was the plan for the property?
Yeah, probably, I would, I think it would be conducive, like, be great if we, they have Dollar Geniuses with gas stations, that would be great, but I don't know, we got a lot of Dollar Geniuses around here, so I don't know, but there's no place to get gas running in that area unless you go, come to Thomason or go toward Laverne, right.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have two people signed up also to speak, I've got Laura Gaines. Are you to speak for or against? I suppose, okay, I just, one check down here, I just, okay, you're welcome to step up. You will be allotted five minutes speaking time, and like I said, please state your name. Either side, it doesn't really matter. Set your name and address, please.
Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Laura Gaines, I reside at 524 Allen Road, Collo, Georgia. I am here on behalf of several members of the audience who also reside on Allen Road, and in their interest and in my interest, we are opposed to the rezoning request, and there are several reasons why. Currently, it's a very quiet community, we don't have hardly any, we don't have crime in our area. We are concerned about the increase and possibility of more crime, we're concerned about the traffic increase as well. Additionally, we have a fire department, it's a volunteer fire department located on Allen Road, I am a volunteer fire member, and with a convenience store or a gas store or anything of that nature at this location would allow more traffic, and it will require that we would be taxed, when I say taxed, I'm talking about the fire department, it's a volunteer fire department, and with that said, we would have to respond to any and all calls that, situations that may or may not occur at that location. We're also concerned about the crime rate, as I stated, we don't have any crime, so with the influx of anything new in our area, that would be a possibility of an increase in crime. I don't know what kind of market research has been done, other than the fact that was previously stated about what we don't have when it comes to the gas. I've lived in that community practically all of my life, and most members of the audience has as well, and we've had no issues with obtaining gas or services that we needed from the surrounding communities, and it does precipitate a need for a gas station or convenience store at that location at this time, and I'm not sure if I've covered everything, have covered most of the things.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we also have Michelle Wilder sign up to speak. Please step up and state your name and address, please, ma'am.
Michelle Wilder, 7411 Highway 19 South, Collo, Georgia, 31016. I am opposed to the gas station convenience store at that particular spot, I understand Ms. Green owns the property, and she's entitled to do whatever she would like with her property, but my concern is the Greens own a lot of property on 19, they have several options to put a convenience store, gas station, anywhere along 19, I understand she said that there's no place to stop between Thomason and Butler, but there's a lot of open land that can be used. My concerns are, like Laura said, the traffic, it's going to cause congestion there, people in our community do walk in the morning, and we do walk Allen Road, so that's going to be a problem. I'm concerned with the flow of traffic, like I said, once you get on 19 and you have cars coming, is there going to be a turnaround there, and none of those questions have been asked. We find ourselves here again addressing an issue that's going to affect our community when we have the tower put in our area against our will, and it seems every time decisions are being made for us and not with us, and historically, that has always been a problem for communities of color, when we look at Tulsa, Oklahoma, African Americans have owned land along the beaches, and Myrtle Beach, Virginia Beach, and constantly things are happening to our community that change the landscape of our community and that affect things that we don't necessarily want. So I am opposed for that reason.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Judy, any replies, anything, or anything you'd like to add?
No, I mean, I, I understand their concerns, but I don't think, I don't think the crime would be a problem there, I mean, most of those people that probably would stop there would be people going, you know, up the highway, but I mean, that's just my thought, but, and I don't, I mean, this is just me saying, I don't think it's going to affect the traffic that much on Allen Road, I think maybe it will a little bit, if people could cut through from 80 that way and over to that spot, and not go down 80 and get on 19 and come up, so that is consideration, but I really think it would be a good thing in the long run if it's a nice facility and it's kept up and maintained properly. And we'd be assured of that, though.
Excuse me, are you not sign up to speak, sir? You're not, you didn't sign up?
I did sign up.
I did.
I guess, my question may be pointed at Doug, has there been any research done, would it, would the entrance be, if they did put a convenience store on 19, would it have to have a decel lane because of the, the two-lane traffic, or would it turn off of, onto Allen and the back end to the property?
Well, obviously, this is a DOT building, so they'd have to follow the DOT guidelines, I don't know what those are, so that would require some research. In the report, and I failed to say this, but one of the things similar to what you're asking about, there are some conditions that were recommended in the report that, at least on Allen Road, if there is an entrance, we do suggest that it be set back 100 feet, so that you don't have that interference with any traffic closer to US 19 itself. So if you decide, you know, please to do anything tonight and recommend approval, the Board of Commissioners, I would ask that you look at the conditions of approval, there are three of them, the cross-access is number one, that the site, when it is developed, allow for any cross-access to parcels that are next to it, that any access on Allen Road be set back at least 100 feet from 19, and then while it's already required, we want the G C 1 standards to be required, and we just ask that be a condition so that it's highlighted for any future developers. But in terms of accell decel lanes, again, that's a DOT standard, we could look into that if you decide to continue the case tonight, or if you just want the answer and you do make a decision tonight.
Anything, Jeff, did you think of?
You know, it's a really big need for it, is my number one question. You know, we have a room full of residents that live in that area, I would think that they would be the ones to say, we need it or we don't. And I know that there is lack of gas stations, I lived down in that area. But again, you know, I look at the character map here, I just don't think it's fit for that area. And again, that's my opinion. You know, I know that there's a gas station a little bit down Highway 80, and I know there's been some crime there, bad crime, and I'm not basing my decision on the crime itself, I just don't think it's the right location to put this. Again, looking at the character map, I don't think it is.
Um, you know, as far as what I see, I mean, yes, I can see the need between Thomason and Butler for some form of service, you know, a gas station, a convenience store such as that, I get, I really can see that, and I, as far as the, everything we've got on 19 South pretty much is, is wooded and timber type situation, but we do, you know, I think that we can see, expect some growth on our main corridors in these areas. Convenience stores, I think are one thing, and I think it may, just an open approval to say, okay, we're approving of the convenience store, and what we wind up with a lot of times in Upton County that I've seen, is the convenience store is more a lottery store, more so than it is particularly a convenience store, you know, see the, I don't know what the machines are called, where they, now I understand Georgia Lottery and the tickets and things that are sold is one thing, but this other type of gambling, I think is a little bit different situation, and I think that's what tends to bring in your, your crime and your, your, the stuff, you know, the traffic that you, that really you don't want in that area. To approve the change, I could go along with the change, but I would, really would like to have more information on what type of something was going there versus just an open change to, of the zoning. I'm not opposed to being one there, but just a little bit better description of what's there is kind of where I stand on it, and, you know, I really don't like a lot of the lottery stuff that goes on with the spin, the, those machines, you know, we got, I think we have enough of those in Upton County from my standpoint. So I don't, you know, on my opinion, I don't think we've got, I don't have enough information to approve.
I totally agree with that, and also by two of our board members not being here, I would definitely like to have more input on it. I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to the store if I was a traveling person coming through, you might not know how far Butler and Thomason are apart, that would be my particular reasoning for having it, because it's like, oh, I've only got 12 miles to go, and, you know, it's a long ways, but I think a convenience store could be very convenient at times, but I also see the constituents issue as well, keeping their, their community very rural, and I live in a rural community, so I understand that, but I too agree with Chairman Fallon that we do need more information on what your intent is with it, because even if you sell the property, anybody could put anything there, I'm not against it, but at the same time, I, I think we do need more information on what's going to be planted there.
So based on that, do we have a motion to move one way or the other here?
I would say table it till the next meeting for more information.
Bring forward more information specifically what you may want there, okay. And we have a motion to continue this particular hearing till next month, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Continue it until the next meeting.
Yes. Okay. Do we have any other business that anybody would like to bring up, board related?
I don't.
Okay.
I don't have anything.
I didn't, other than we got our meeting in the morning?
In the morning, and then Vice Chair Rush and I will be going next week to Atlanta for further training.
Lawrenceville, I think?
Uh-huh.
Okay, Secretary, you got any issues or announcements?
No, you stole my thunder on tomorrow's workshop, we'll see you at nine o'clock, when you go into the new Justice Center after you go through security, hang a hard left, and. and it's not a very big room, um, hopefully, we won't have an overflow crowd, but it'll certainly be convenient for your meeting, and there's a nice table and a new, a new building that y'all wanted to be in and have your meeting there, so you'll be there 9:00.
Okay, we have a motion for adjournment?
Adjourned.
Second?
6:00 on the...
Thank y'all all for coming. Kill the camera, I'm going to get this procedure down, that one.